Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting of the regular council, common council of the city of Hudson to order for Monday, May 5th, 2014. At this point, I'd like to you to join, rise and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in one power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Morset.
Here.
District Two, Yakub.
Here.
District Three, McCormick.
Here.
District Four, Weber.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Vanslow.
Here. At this point, we would, anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on anything that isn't on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity to speak to the council. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Okay, we'll move on for consent agenda.
To approve the regular and closed session common council meeting minutes of April 21st, 2014, and the special meeting minutes of April 28th, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $317,088.27. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request, and additional information is posted on the city's website. And to approve the issuance of 10 regular operators licenses for the period May 6th, 2014 to June 30th, 2016, and to approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used at the Hudson Hockey Association event on May 10th, 2014, for the beanbag tournament. Additional operator license information is available in the clerk's office on request, and the issuance of all operator licenses are contingent on the payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the Class B beer and Class B wine license for May 9th, 2014 to May 12th, 2014, for the Hudson Hockey Association Beanbag Tournament event on Saturday, May 10th, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. To approve the fireworks paraphernalia sales permits for the sale dates of June 15th, 2014, to July 7th, 2014 inclusive, contingent on attending the mandatory licensing meeting to the Menards, Fleet Farm, Target, and Walmart stores. To place and file the city clerk's quarterly report and then Hudson North Hudson Community Access Board minutes of April 22nd, 2014. And that is all.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yakub?
Yes.
McCormick?
Aye.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes. Now, we'll go back to the parking commission that I missed. Parking ramp study. We have Mr. Scott Fomin here today, and he's going to make our, everyone brought their copy? If you don't, I have extra ones here.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Framing. I'm with Walker Parking Consultants out of Minneapolis. I am here to give you an overview of the downtown parking garage study conducted for the city of Hudson. I was going to run through a short PowerPoint to try to give you a feeling of the contents of that study. A little bit about myself, I'm a professional engineer, have been working with Walker Parking Consultants for about the last 15 years, designing parking facilities and doing parking studies during that time. The overview of the parking study, during this presentation, we're just going to do about five or six slides. I'm going to talk about the study area, I'm going to talk about the design constraints that were requested to be applied to the study, the size of the facility and things, and the amount of stalls that would be accommodated by the facility. Talk about the conceptual designs, what the conceptual designs may look like, and then the evaluation of those conceptual designs. The design constraints that we were asked to be, to apply to our conceptual parking facilities were, the city was interested in adding 200 parking stalls net to the subject sites. The subject sites are the North Lot, represented with the red rectangle at the top of this study area slide, and also the Williams Lot, represented by the larger red square at the bottom of the site. The purpose of this parking garage is really to service the commercial district downtown, provide additional parking, these additional 200 stalls for the commercial district. Another constraint that was requested was to keep the parking facility concepts, concepts under 40 feet in height. The thought is there to maintain the character of the downtown and not have an overly imposing building. Finally, the goal of the city is to try to find as cost-effective of a solution as possible to provide these additional stalls in a parking structure, and try to identify that within the study. These are some pictures of actual conceptual designs that are provided within the study itself. I just pulled two of these out. We did, I believe, at least five concepts. The North Lot concept, what it is, is it's a three-dimensional drawing of the developed concept that identifies the entry, the exit points to the parking facility. It also identifies where a main stair elevator tower may occur. Utilizing these three-dimensional sketches, we can identify the massing of the facility, how tall the facility would be to accommodate the number of stalls. The top image is a concept for the North Lot. The bottom image is a concept for the Williams Lot. The image shown for the Williams Lot would require demolition of the existing fire station, which will be something that will be identified in some of the reviewing of the report findings by the city. Design evaluation of these concepts, generally, we do a matrix-type analysis. We identify, we line up the differing concepts vertically, we define some parameters that define the usefulness of the facility, maybe cost per stall, stall capacity, the building height, how far to the downtown district of a walk, how easy is it to find this facility, or how easy is it to get to your destination after parking in the facility, which would be called wayfinding. Consequently, we did a matrix evaluation, just summing columns across to try to identify our winning concept. Our summary of cost, what we like to use as a parking consultant is a cost per net stall. We had different facilities with cost per stall varying from 19 up to $28,000 per stall. These are generally in the ranges that we see in the industry in this part of the country at this time. Some of the study analysis had to incorporate the demolition of the fire station. Our Lot Four, one of the highlighted bands that you can see in the graph in the upper right, actually is the Williams Lot, sort of a preferred site, that would require the demolition of the fire station and all that that entails. Some of the costs identified in the parking study are construction costs, but I want to caution you that construction cost is different than total project cost. Total project cost may entail the opportunity cost for the site, be it added dollars spent to get authorizations for access or egress, it may include design, architectural engineering fees, may include costs such as legal fees, quality assurance during the construction process. So, it's really used as a metric just to try to gauge and decide what option the city may want to move on. That's really a summary of the parking study, the downtown parking study. My final button here is next steps. Where do you go from here? Typically, what I see these studies used for is consideration by the city to understand what may be the best location to apply a parking facility. They use these studies to identify the nominal cost, relative cost of different solutions. The next steps may be further investigating one of the sites, further investigating the soils, or getting a survey of the individual sites, or using these things to get a broad parameter of the cost of the facility, so consideration can be given to trying to identify how to pay for these parking facilities. So, with that, that's the conclusion of my summary of the downtown parking study, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions if we have any.
There was a proposal to leave the fire station and build over it?
One of the concepts where, for the Williams site, was idealized sort of a flat floor parking structure. This flat floor parking structure could be raised up above the roof elevation of the fire station, such that the fire station would remain in place. So, some other considerations, it could be done. Some of the other considerations that may affect would be how you get into that parking plate. You may have to go up to Third Street and sort of sweep around the facility, might not be as intuitive to enter the facility, but that consideration was given within this study, so there is options there. Any other questions relating to the content of the report?
Yeah, in your experience, if it's either on the major thoroughfare or a block off, I mean, how significant, from a use standpoint, does it become when it's not exactly visible at their signs that?
It is, it's very good to have it being immediately visible on the main drag. In this instance, your Lot, I think it was Lot Two, was right on the main drag, however, the Lot's a little bit short. It makes for an inefficient parking structure that starts to become taller, so it really needs to be a weighed decision on could you acquire more property or air rights, or would you want the facility to contain less stalls and get taller. So, it'd be something that could be weighed more finely into that wayfinding aspect, because it is a very powerful aspect. Most of these sites are about a half block off the main drag, so it's not too limiting to move it off the main drag, but it is, should be given consideration.
Other questions?
I have a question. It doesn't really matter which concept, my question bears for all, for the Williams Lot or even the North Lot. When you read, for example, Concept Four, existing stall count is 48, new stall count is 273, net gain 224, because we're going to lose those 48 on the lower level, because we're going to build a ramp over them.
That's correct.
Correct. So, at 18,000 a stall, we're basically paying, to lose 48 stalls, we're going to, instead of being able to build above that level and start from there, we're going to pay $18,000 to replace that whole level, per stall.
That's correct, but it isn't really, you're not really buying those stalls again. I think those stalls during the construction process, that you would be digging utilities and things through there. So, when we do our construction costs, we just do the cost per stall, such that you're not really buying those stalls, but you're buying all the stalls within the footprint of the building, and then we estimate the construction cost of the building. But, building a parking structure where there already is existing parking makes, raises the bar quite a bit as to getting an improved net stall count. You're right.
Based on your experience, what would the project cost be as a percentage of the construction cost, if you can do it that way?
Oh, if I do it that way? Usually, you'll have somewhere in the range of 10% to 15% soft cost, be it other costs as far as design services, legal, soil boring, surveys, quality assurance testing during construction. So, it's very, it's highly variable. You could say some of those costs may be the cost of demolishing the fire station, or you could even include the cost of building a new fire station in some of that cost, if you wanted. Depends how you want to accommodate that total cost.
Anyone surprised at the costs?
No.
Total cost of the parking garages, we're in the range of four, four and a half million dollars.
Is there any advantage to having more than one? Like, two small ones?
If you had two small ones, I think your efficiency would really drop. These are, in general terms, these are fairly small parking garages. They end up costing more per stall. When you're getting up into the 5, 7, 900, it may be a little bit more efficient on a cost-per-stall basis. So, it's unlikely that building two small parking facilities would be more cost-effective.
It'd be cheaper than tearing down the fire station and building a new one, I mean, if you think about it that way.
Yes, it may be. And also, the parameter of 200 net stalls, you know, if you make a variation on that, you might be able to fall right under, get 170 and stay within your height parameters. This was a broad parameter that we used for the context of this study.
So, with the option to build over the public safety building, for example, will we still lose those 48 stalls?
Well, it really is contained inside the building, so they're not really lost.
No, but it's like a $2 million difference there, but those, I mean, rounding up to 50 stalls is $2 million.
Yeah, it's a million dollars in theory, yeah. It's very...
So, I guess I'm asking, is that, are we able to save, is there any way, are we able to save those, that main level parking?
Those stalls would be in that facility, yes. But, the cost, estimated cost to build the building really isn't going to change, saying that.
Is the height restriction, is that our own restriction, or is that a state restriction?
We have 45 feet, Denny.
Can't we get an exception to that, or?
Right, and some of our concepts, we were right in the range of, you know, it was 36 feet on, when you're looking at the North Lot, to accommodate the 200 stalls, it became about 36 feet tall on the, on the north end, where it was embedded in the hill, and about 48 feet on the other end. So, is it meeting your criteria of, you know, 45 feet? Most municipalities sort of average that elevation, so technically, it may meet your criteria, or you may bring your required number of stalls down a small amount and still stay under that. So, it's, they would take a further development to really, you know, some further consideration by, by the city to really delve into the study.
If it were to be the North Lot, those parking ramps can be pretty stark. Is there a way to modify that so it looks like it fits more in place with the rest of downtown?
I think there is. I think the newer generation parking ramps are really much more architecturally developed than the previous generation of ramps. They used to have been really driven by just pure cost. 65% of the cost of the parking facility is just going to be the structural frame, which is very, very different than a building, such that adding a very attractive facade is really a small component of the total cost of the facility. So, you can get a nice-looking facility with a minor added cost, which is unique from a typical building.
Well, any other questions? Now is your chance.
You talk a lot about buying more airtime. What about digging, like in the North Lot, you could dig it lower?
That's correct. When you, when you go below grade, typically, your costs are higher than going up into the air. Right, so we didn't really want to look at going below grade because of the effective cost. They are, you see, some of these solutions are sort of embedded into the hill partially, partially embedded into the hill, so that's more cost-effective, but a total basement is very, very expensive.
So, Denny, are we willing to go over 45? Are we allowed to go over 45? Can we make an exception to go over 45? What's the?
It's a DNR thing.
Like any other developer, you would have to justify variance. If you wanted to go to the Board of Appeals, you have to meet the same criteria any other developer would have to meet. Other option would be is to take a look, and where you want to change the height restrictions if in the central business district, and go higher than 45 feet. You could do that, that would be a legislative change, have to go to the public hearing, but yes, that would be an option to you.
I guess one of the questions he'd ask, or I think, is it a DNR issue as far as?
No, we're out of, we're out of the roadway in both locations.
Both of those are. Okay. Thank you.
So, how many more levels could we go up? Then, I would ask both of you, if we built over the fire station, could I add two more levels on there, and how many spaces would I end up with? I guess is my question.
Well, I don't have the report in front of me, but it's usually, you can just add a level. I mean, it's fairly straightforward as far as conceptualizing those heights and things. Again, that road, the roadway Third Street slopes up very dramatically, so I think, depending on which elevation you're looking at this facility, it may be one story on one side and four stories on the other. So, you get into technical things related to how tall is that building, really?
Okay. Any other questions?
As a consultant, how would you consult us?
As a consultant, I would say, you definitely, it'd be worthwhile to have a little bit more discussion as to the content of the report and what's in there, to give you, if you need some guidance. I would say, read the report and ponder the report and have internal discussions, and then I think we'd be open to listen to a few of your questions and carry on the discussion a little further.
One of the ideas I had is, let's refer it back to that parking committee, subcommittee, bring back some other recommendations, but the folks that aren't on it, if you have any questions, now is the time to...
I guess, one question more. The elephant in the room is the Stillwater's parking ramp and the success or no success that it's had. Are you familiar with that and kind of?
I am familiar with the Stillwater parking ramp. I have driven through the facility. I think they struggled with where to locate the facility. It's also tucked into a hill, and it's fairly tall in nature, and you wind through it, I think it probably does accommodate the number of stalls that they utilized. Is it completely simple and easy as far as a user? I would say, it isn't the greatest. So, yes, I'm familiar with it. It would be nice to do better, have something more obvious, and easier to find, easier to drive through, would be the goals. Would you, can you, can you get it small enough to do that on a small site? You may have to compromise the number of stalls slightly, or compromise a little bit of height. At four stories, it's not a tall, tall building, but it is, you know, in the neighborhood of 48 feet, it's above your, possibly above your limitation to meet your 200-plus net stalls.
Thank you.
Where have you done a parking ramp recommendation in a city this size that we could see?
A city of this size, where have we done recommendations? The city of Edina? We've worked with the city of Edina, the city of Hopkins.
Did they build one, offer you a recommendation?
Yes, they've built some of those facilities, yes, or they've added on, built.
Edina has more than one, don't they?
Edina has three parking structures.
Yep.
So, it's fairly common in the smaller downtowns. It's usually a question of how do you get it paid for?
Mm-hmm.
It's very difficult.
This is not, I mean, to pay, it's not going to pay for itself, that's for sure.
No.
Why don't you give us the first comment that you made when you gave this?
Yeah, my first comment is, generally, with your, with your parking rates and things, it won't be self-sustaining by paying, having paid parking fees. Just, the economics just don't work unless you're in an expensive realm. I think you would need a couple dollars an hour, four or five dollars an hour, and have it filled all the time to reach those metrics. So, it generally won't be a self-sustaining facility. And it's not self-sustaining even in the urban suburban layouts. I also did, we're working on one right now in the city of Eagan to support some additional shopping, things like that, and sort of promote a new downtown area.
I see you're recommending on the Williams Lots, access on Third, from Third Street? That's not a, not a great street to be adding any traffic to.
Not a great street.
As it's currently designed.
Not a great street for access awayfinding and things, but it does give you a really efficient access onto your facility. You could build flat plates and not have to build ramps. So, that's just displaying that concept.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We had another item that I passed out that we've, we talked about at our parking, our last, are we okay with this, Catherine? We're talking about parking.
I don't know what you're going to say. It's hard for me to answer that question.
Work with me, work with me. This is just a, basically putting diagonal parking on Lakefront Park, and probably would get us about 56 stalls almost immediately. It's already our property. Again, we've hired our engineer that we can have a chance to look at it, to see whether it makes sense or not. We also have to go through the park board to see where we're at. I think, Denny, you were going to check on...
Ordinances.
Ordinances, as far as going into the park, taking parkland away, because there would be some parkland that would go away. One is at the far end, south of, across from the shopping center down there. There's a place in there, but this other one is right across from the Phipps, and it goes past to our public safety building and library. So, if we add a diagonal parking, similar to what we have across the street, it would be a short-term kind of a fix, or possible fix, definitely just very short-term. And I think we're going to be looking at that further in our parking. I just wanted you folks to take a look at it and see if you had any comments or thoughts on it. Hopefully, our new engineer will take a look at it right away, if Denny assigns that. Okay.
Justin, looks good.
Everybody, any other questions on parking? Okay, planning commission, plan commission. Discussion and possible action on development plans for a 1385 square foot deck and a 2576 square foot ground-level patio at 601 Second Street. Tom Temaro, Smiling Moose, has requested for payment in lieu of parking, off-street parking. Mr. Donald.
Evening. The Plan Commission recommends approval of development plans for the deck and patio improvements proposed by Smiling Moose at 601 Second Street, contingent on payment in lieu of parking for $70,000. There was a revised set of plans which provided ballusters in the railing area which would add additional, in the patio area, which would add additional deterrent for somebody to come over the retaining wall into the patio area. Also, the ground-level access on the patio area was moved further to the east or up the hill, basically to the backside of the wall. That's in accordance with some suggestions and requirements of the State Building Code for accessibility pathway requirements. Mr. Temaro's here. I don't know if you want to also combine this discussion with Item 7E on the Finance Committee, which is the amendment to the alcohol premises, where you want to have both discussions at the same time.
I think, let's see if there's an interest to approve this, then we could talk about the, again, the, if the council elects to approve this, then we will also, we can move it up on the agenda to talk about being able to serve alcohol out on the deck and patio area. But, there's no sense talking about both of them right away until we, if the council decides that's what they'd like to do.
Mr. Bruce Lenzin, the project architect, is here with an illustration of the proposed patio deck. If I'd like him to go over that also.
Bruce, you want to bring it up, and does people want to see that? Folks that aren't on planning, which is only Mary and I, but you want to see it?
For most of us, yeah.
Yeah, most of everybody. Why don't you come on up, Bruce? But, you did get it in your packet.
Of course.
I guess you didn't get it in your packet, you got it on the computer. Yes?
Okay, just to give a quick overview, the, what Denny was referencing is initially, there was a, the entrance to the lower patio was located here. It's now located in this opening here. It was just slid up, as for building code requirements as far as access. But, basically, the, there's a third, the upper deck is, retires 31 feet from the existing building, and spans, it's held back slightly from each property line, ease of construction, and the, overhead, there's a proposed roof system that, it's an L shape, it goes over to this wall, which is the north wall of the project. And it's for dining, the seating for dining on the upper level. There's a, in the backside is a staircase that is the exit for the main-level building and also for the patio area. The patio area is buffered by planter boxes from this... is buffered by planter boxes from this column here to here, it just, that just slid down, provides a buffer from the sidewalk to the actual patio area, and then there's also four-foot green space, there's a low retaining wall, green space, and then this is where the fence has been put in and that's what we agreed to do as far as adding ballisters to make sure that people are contained on that area of the patio, lower, the lower part contains a bar area and the balance of seating, planned a fire pit fireplace out there, and then this will all be planted and, you know, have plantings all the way across here and into this corner. Any questions?
What's the seating capacity?
I think it's fifty, fifty on the deck and sixty-eight on the patio.
Correct. Okay. Nice looking deck.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve based on plan commission recommendations which would be contingent upon payment in lieu of off-street parking for seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, a motion is there, a second?
Second.
Discussion, we have people here tonight, do we want to hear from the public at all?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that seems fair.
For and against, why don't we, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council, Mimi, if you could give your name and address please?
Mimi Faris, Sanding Insurance, six oh five Second Street, I just would like to be on record to say that I was very disappointed in the five to one decision from the plan commission to recommend the approval of the expansion of the Smiling Moose deck and patio at this time. The motion was based on the fact that they had complied with the codes required for the project, I think as the building inspector for the city of Hudson, I think David Gray would be able to make that determination, I didn't feel as though the plan commission was in compliance with their own plan document as it relates to the downtown historic district. On May twenty-second, the downtown parking committee of the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce will reconvene to discuss the downtown parking issues, this group studies the intermediate and long-term parking needs of the city and provides feedback to the city council with recommendations to solve parking problems. To approve an expansion of yet another high-density business, adding a hundred and ten seats plus staffing, plus a major street project which is occurring on First Street this spring and summer, will put undue pressure on all of the businesses in the downtown area and certainly in the adjacent area to the Smiling Moose. This parking issue that we are facing is real and it's crucial to our current as well as our future downtown business success. Our downtown has grown, it has thrived with a diversity of office, professional, retail, and restaurants, and in order for all the businesses to continue to thrive, we need adequate parking available to all of these segments. The council now has the responsibility to review this request and determine how it will impact the downtown, I urge the council to postpone this decision until such time that recommendations leading to solutions can be determined for the parking, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Art Doyle, Art Doyle Spokes and Pedals, six zero seven Second Street, I, as I did in the planning commission, I'm concerned about parking and available parking in downtown Hudson when any survey shows that we have a shortage, talks with customers indicate there's a shortage, there's a, could be a growing trend, just like in Stillwater where local people do not want to come to downtown because parking is just a bother to find, if you're going out for dinner or going out for a drink, you're more determined to find a parking spot than for a daily business or a daily need sort of store. We just had a presentation that the parking ramp idea is a challenging one in a historic downtown, it's a challenging one in a scenic downtown, and it's an expensive one, downtowns were not designed to have such high density of use in each of their buildings where there's multiple two to four hundred people capacity or a hundred and fifty person capacity in multiple buildings, it's logical that there's a parking shortage right now because there has been a mass increase of high-density use in downtown Hudson, the town was not designed for that, it's changing and I'm not against change, I've paid many dollars per year to advertise for people to come to Hudson, I've applauded increased capacity in both the tax base and different types of restaurants and jewelry stores and clothing stores and many stores, I pay eight hundred dollars a year to promote people to come to Hudson, so I'm not afraid of people coming to Hudson, what I'm afraid of is not having enough parking spots for when people do come to Hudson, the town was not designed for such high-density use and to put in a parking ramp as was exemplified in Stillwater is not an easy task in a downtown scenic area, Stillwater's parking ramp to everyone that I've ever talked to is completely underutilized because of its location, its location is based on the fact that you can't just drop a parking lot into a scenic, historic downtown and in a good spot because it gets in the way of the view of the river, it gets, you have to take buildings down, it won't have enough capacity, its costs are too high, so to expand parking is something that's delightful to talk about, I'm all in favor of it, but it's not looking like it's a real practical thing in a historic scenic downtown area, so until we can get it sorted out to increase the density of use in buildings, doesn't seem appropriate in regards to current businesses and future businesses, and one of the things as far as if we're concerned about people coming to Hudson is to know how people beyond Hudson think about it, and there was just an article in the Minnesota Monthly Magazine where they came and visited Hudson, and a quote from the magazine article, "I love how it feels like you're just another neighbor here," Haley remarked between sips, "I get it, Hudson's neither so thirsty to be overrun, so small to be insular, nor so big to be overwhelming," and that's because that is what is Hudson has been working on for the last thirty years that I've been here, is to establish an identity like that, if we continue with a high-density use with the lack of parking, there will be people parking up in the neighborhoods and we will lose what has been worked on so hard to develop. Yeah, it's, it's just not enough parking and I'm not seeing a short-term solution, and I'm not comfortable with the fact that someone can pay seventy thousand dollars to become a high-density business and the seventy thousand dollars does not do any short-term solutions, any parking solution is a long ways off and the stress that it'll put on current and future businesses is not made up for by seventy thousand dollars.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Is there anyone else? Yes ma'am.
Hi, Kate Tim, owner of Urban Alvin Vine, five twenty Second Street, I also live in downtown Hudson on Third Street, and so I have to say, four years ago, I came to downtown Hudson, opening my business here, and there were a lot of good reasons behind opening it here, number one, it was a very well-balanced community and still is, while I have been fortunate to be part of the growth of this community, you now have nineteen restaurants or people who serve food within two and a half blocks, they are high-density businesses, and while my business is balanced between retail and food and coffee and a lot of other elements, I guess I'm speaking on the behalf of my fellow business partners who thrive or have to survive on everyday downtown business. The opening of every establishment has been a continued game changer in town, which is good, it's good for competition, it makes us all do our business better, and we are focused on being the best we can be to stay in business. I think where Hudson needs to really think long and hard about is to use Stillwater as an example of what, of what possibly impacted the change of that community, while I'm not a native of this area, I was a traveler to Stillwater on many, for many times, and as people walk into my business, I'm always hearing about they love Hudson for so many reasons, one is that Stillwater became a town of restaurants and antique stores, which made it very difficult for other retail elements to survive, services, when I look at Mickelson's, I think, is someone really going to walk four blocks to get their prescriptions, there are many other places to go, up on the hill, what has been so special about this community is something you shouldn't lose, and while I have, I don't want to thwart certainly the opportunity for the Smiling Moose to succeed with a patio because I love a patio too, but, and they're doing a good job at what they're doing, but I just feel that the community really needs to take a long look at overdevelopment too fast and losing what you already have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Could I just make one more comment if I could?
Sure. If you'd step to the microphone.
She's so enthused now. I've heard it.
Well, I know you've heard it, but everyone else hasn't heard it, and am I confident that you've all read all the remarks from the, is that true, all the remarks have been read and everyone knows exactly what I'm going to say right now?
No.
No.
Okay, well, I mean, if it's true Alan, I'll gladly walk away, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, since I know you, I wasn't thinking of protocol, I apologize.
Go ahead Art, would you please?
I do want to point out that in a business like mine and other businesses that are not high-density use, we have five to ten customers at a time and not fifty to three hundred customers at a time, and when parking spots are not available, every parking spot makes a bigger impact on our type of business compared to high-density use businesses. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close the comments from the audience and, it wasn't really a public hearing, but I think everyone had a chance to express themselves, so at this point it'll be, we have a recommendation or we have a motion and a second, comments, questions, thoughts?
Can I just make a comment, for instance, I make the motion so I can explain why I'm making my motion, obviously I'm on plan commission, so I've had a lot of time to think about it as well, and I've continued to stand behind what the plan commission has decided for multiple reasons, one, I believe we do have a short-term solution with this plan that we've been working on, the public parking committee through the council, not through the chamber, which is a committee I've also sat on for the last four years, I think in one meeting at the council, we've accomplished more than the four years I've sat at the chamber level, which is, which is sad, this parking study, or this, what we're working on here could at minimum give us fifty-six stalls, the Moose is, or excuse me, the Smiling Moose is paying for up to twenty-eight stalls, so, yeah, I think we're adequately covering the expansion onto their deck, they're a business already in town, they're a business where they had suggested before they were coming in town that a deck may be coming, this is not something new, and I'm, I guess I'm frustrated to think that, that we, that it would be said that we are not following or thinking of the comprehensive plan of downtown, I think the plan commission has always thought of the, of the future of the city of Hudson, I mean, and I think Mr. Darnold has been, you know, the secretary of plan commission has done a great job with this city, and this also comes with his recommendation, and, and yes, I do believe that they are following our ordinances that require them to have a deck, they have not, they have not broken one ordinance that we have in place to have a deck for their establishment, that is why I'm in favor of this deck, it has nothing to do with, with the other issues, and I think we are solving some of those issues, and yes, they can be paid for with their seventy thousand dollars and other funds that we have collected for payment in lieu of parking, it's not just from the Smiling Moose, it's from other funds we have worked with, so I continue to stand behind the plan commission and my motion, and I think it should be welcomed to the city, that they would have this deck as I think it has brought in more business to other establishments, I say that because I've been told for other establishments. I will also make one more point that I made at plan commission that Mr. Doyle just brought up, and that is that we have for the past, I don't know how many years, Randy was public safety chair back when we started it, and I was public safety chair for two years, we have closed Locust Street on Friday nights in the summer for the car show, which has, we've lost, I can't remember how many spots, twenty spots on Locust Street we'll say, between, for that car show every Friday night, and there was never a complaint from one business that they've lost those twenty spots on a Friday evening in the summer, so I'm not going to be swayed by that since we've been doing something like that for the past, I don't know how many years, and continue to do so.
Okay, anyone else?
I would just like to mention, or just to say that in my observations of the parking in downtown Hudson, it appears to be limited to Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, which is where the biggest issue becomes, and that's usually after five PM, I can come down here every day of the week, almost, and find parking up until four or five o'clock in the afternoon, so I don't see it as a universal type parking problem, it's a limited type of parking problem, and it does not conflict with some of the businesses in town who are not open until nine or ten or eleven o'clock at night, and so I don't, I don't feel real concerned about that type of a parking issue, and I would agree with Mary that I welcome people coming into downtown Hudson because it does expose all of our businesses to people who otherwise would not be coming down here, and if I was in business, I would embrace that as a marketing strategy to increase my business by having these people draw customers or potential customers to my business, I think it's a great idea and I love the fact that we have a business owner willing to invest in the city of Hudson.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Darnold, has the Smiling Moose complied with all of the requirements that the city requires for this patio or deck expansion?
Well, the consideration is if they meet the building code and zoning code requirements, the only other zoning consideration is, is the off-street parking, if they cannot provide the off-street parking, then they have the alternative to apply for the payment in lieu of parking, they have agreed to, they have made an application for that, so they have chosen the alternative, it's really up to the common council where you want to approve that alternative versus requiring them to provide off-street parking.
And that's a payment over eight years?
Well, that's up also to the common council, it's your, a straight payment, or if you, the ordinance allows the council to approve a assessment or a payment period up to eight years, but that's not required.
So the payment, it doesn't create any parking spaces?
The payment should be used hopefully to provide off-street parking, and our alternative would be the potentially leased private parking that could be used or turned into public parking, but there's a number of ways those funds could be utilized.
I'm assuming that the payment in lieu of providing parking has been applied to other businesses?
There's just two, this would be the second one.
The second one? The dollars, Tom, are designated to go into a fund that cannot be used for anything other than acquiring parking, it's not used for maintenance or anything like that, isn't that for anything?
It's segregated from the general parking maintenance fund.
This was an ordinance that started in two thousand and like ten, which is why it hasn't, it hasn't been multiple businesses that have paid in yet, it's just, it's a newer ordinance that we formed.
I guess I would have three points that concern me, one, is we just heard tonight that it's going to cost us nineteen thousand dollars per stall minimum to add parking, so we're losing, what's that? So, we're losing, what's that, 16, 5 on, on each spot we, we, we're increasing the need for. So, it's, you know, the economics obviously aren't very good on, if you look at it from that perspective. But that's not restricted to just this place. The second thing that concerns me, and I remember when I moved to this, moved to the area a long time ago, that I considered Hudson a dirty little river town. And that's what it was. I lived in Minnesota, and that was, that was the opinion of this town. And it has changed immensely over the years. And I, you know, it's just incredible. This venue being outside, noisy, appears to be encouraging heavy drinking after midnight, at least the publicity that I'm hearing. And I don't know the truth behind this. But that concerns me. We've had a problem, what, three or four years ago? Just up the, up the street, somebody had a, had a, put a little patio back there, and there are all kinds of complaints about noises and, and people doing all kinds of things off the deck that we didn't want to have. So, really am concerned about how we're going to manage that. Is this going to, is this going to be a reasonably quiet environment? Are we going to have a band out there? What kind of noise? What kind of sound system? There will be one. How loud will that be? Is it going to be? I, I guess I consider, I look at the, at the dock and how well they, they manage that. I think that's, that's a pretty good example of having an outside place. But whether or not that's going to, what kind of environment are we going to bring in here? We need to manage that. And will we manage that? And are we going to have continuous issues with that before? And then that's going to be another rancorous issue here and coming before the council. And the third thing, as I, as I drove back into parking, we're losing six spots in addition to the 28 that, that, yeah. Go back to your numbers, you know, about how you're, we're losing spots on the, on the parking ramps. We're losing, there are six spots behind that, that area right now that we're going to lose. Gone. In addition to the 28. So, those are, those are six spots that are, that are mostly taken up by employees.
Denny, aren't those concluded in the 28 stalls?
Correct.
Yes. So, they're paying for those spots that were?
So, that, those were added in?
Mm-hmm.
In addition to the square footage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And then the other thing I noticed is they've got these huge trash dumpsters right back there. Where are those going to go?
Going in underground, in their facility.
Correct, Tom. Isn't that where they were going to go?
Yes.
That's excellent.
Garage.
Yep.
That's excellent.
Actually, it's going to look nicer back there without the big, huge trash dumpsters.
You know, when we talk about parking problems, here you've got a person who is a business in downtown Hudson. They're willing to make an investment for this construction, and they're facing the same parking problems that everybody else is facing, and that he's not deterred by investing his money, knowing that he's facing a parking problem. He knows exactly what he's facing, and he's willing to put money into the town because he thinks he can overcome the issue. And that, so, so here you have a contrast in business people, one facing a parking problem, but saying, you know what? I'm going to invest because I think I can overcome it. And other people saying, I can't overcome a parking problem. I, I, it's a stark contrast to me.
And let's assume two-
Because the Smiling Moose is facing the same parking-
It's time to let other people talk. You know, I-
Oh, sorry, John.
No, that's quite all right. I mean, you're, you guys obviously are for it, so that's clear.
Wow.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. However, having been a business owner, my building, my office building is a block away, and what I see now every day is significantly more traffic from Minnesota, which is proving the fact that we get a lot more people from outside. We are going to have construction on First Street. We can add some of this. I get that. But my first inclination when I saw this, before I even talked to Art and Mimi and a bunch of other people downtown, was that's pretty big. It's going to be extremely visible. It's going to be loud. It is, because it's going to be loud, and you can't deny that, because I live downtown and I can hear Pier 500 when they have a band. Not that I care, but I do. Right out of the gate, I thought, well, how come they can't keep half-parking and have the terrace over that and have part solution, rather than go for the whole enchilada out of the gate? Can't we come up with some sort of moderated solution? So, they got a little skin on the game on parking, yet they still have outdoor expansion, and it will still service outdoor customers. And I am a downtown business owner, and I have invested lots of money. I was just kind of looking at this myself. So, payment in lieu of parking versus that. I, I think a compromise would be a good thing to do, just to give everyone a chance to breathe a little easier. It does provide a little bit of extra parking, but it's not the full impact, visual impact, noise impact. We don't really know exactly how this is going to work out, but the average age here versus Pier 500 is about 20 years younger. And I have been there after midnight, and it is a lot of fun. So, like I said, my initial reaction, having been, living downtown and having businesses downtown, is a moderated solution would be a good place to start. Not go for the whole enchilada and just hope for the best that everything is going to work. You know, it behooves us, we have other parts of ordinances, liquor licenses, many other things that limit how we expand downtown. And to me, that just seemed like a good, sort of a, you know, baby steps kind of approach, which still gets them all but a few seats downstairs and, you know, a moderated solution. So, I guess I'd be in favor of part of it, but not all of it.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments?
I'll, you know, I, there's a lot of people in this room over the years that have worked very hard at making downtown Hudson vibrant, bringing in new businesses, and marketing us in, in a way where we'll clean up the businesses, give people options. And, and really, they all worked together to bring more businesses in. And now, what I'm hearing, and I find it very ironic that some of the same people that have worked so hard to make Hudson what it is today, is now poo-pooing a business, for lack of a better term, that is successful in bringing more people in to our city. And at the same time, like Mary said, I've talked with some of the other business owners, they're full on the weekends. They're bringing people in. They're bringing people in, the city where they're spending that tourist dollar that we're all fighting for in certain aspects of what this council, what the Chamber of Commerce has done for so long, trying to attract businesses into this community. And I find it really ironic that some people are being very hypocritical of, of the hard work that they themselves have put in to build in this community, and the continued success of the chamber and us being successful in, in making the right decisions and putting good businesses in. And I think we've done that. At the same time, I'm confident that this parking committee through the council, we've identified right away, almost 57 stalls. We have some alter, other plans that Denny and the mayor and some others are working on, on the phone call, to get more parking. We understand the parking issue. This company has run a good business since they've opened. I've been there, I've seen it. The complaints are not there. The complaints were worse than other places. I think this is a good thing. It'll clean up downtown like we've all worked to do. So, I'm in favor for it. And anybody that says they're not, I just, it's ironic to me, because they've worked so hard to pull the businesses in.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just want to say, um, first, John, please don't ever stop me from speaking like that again. It's only really the mayor's job, not yours. Second, as far as what Randy is just saying, yeah, I've been on the phone all week trying to create more parking for downtown, calling, making phone calls. So, I've been very passionate about parking for a long time. Another reason why I don't appreciate being interrupted. Third, the point I was going to make, which is a point that hasn't been brought up yet, is that the entire restaurant is not going to be filled all day, all night. It's either going to be the deck that's going to be majority-filled, or the inside that's going to be majority-filled. I know when it's 90 degrees out and sticky, I'm not sitting on a deck. I'm going to be sitting inside, and probably the majority of other people will as well. Okay? And, and, and you've made a point yourself. Pier 500 has music outside. No one stopped them. There's a decibel level that we have in the city to help enforce noise. That's how that can be controlled. And I think having a downtown business, you would want to see more, more, more people being attracted to downtown to actually recognize that you have a downtown business. Or maybe, I don't know. I'm, just don't appreciate how I, how I was treated just now, and I'm not going to sit by and accept it.
I apologize. I thought you were done. I honestly did. And I mean that.
All right.
Can I just make one?
Certainly.
Actually, I didn't make any comment. I just asked.
Asked a question, but certainly, Tom.
I think that, I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that there's going to be parking issues, because there will be. But the issue is that they've complied with everything that the city required them to do. And I think that the, that the issues that have been brought up by Mimi and Art and Kay are all legitimate, but have to look at it from the perspective of what's best for the city. And, you know, I guess from that, and since they've complied with everything, if we deny their request, that might initiate further problems. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Anybody else want to add anything? Say anything?
I would only like to say again, I am in favor of part of the solution, only because of everything that's going down now in the summer. I would assume we could expand at a later date. I was never in, intimating that I was against it entirely. So, I will, and I'll state that for the record.
Okay. Anything else before we, I call for the vote? Want everybody to have their two cents or a quarter's worth? Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
One more time.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll go right to the liquor discussion about expanding the issue for-
7E.
7E. Discussion, possible action to change permits for the Smiling Moose Bar and Grill. I think you can look at that. So, we've approved, the council has approved the deck, and they want to be able to serve alcohol out there. Is there a motion to approve or?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that. There's no discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going back to item 7A, Finance Committee, discussion for possible action on liquor license renewal. Nancy, at the, at the Finance Committee, we had the, it was voted to approve except for Hanson Brothers Golf Holdings. That was pulled, as we wanted some more information of whether that should be renewed. There was some discussion about whether that, the operation's open. At the present time, there's a sign-up that says that it's closed. So.
Is there a possibility that someone could buy the golf course and run it as a golf course?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Mary said she'd loaned me the money. Um, the-
Talk to my ex-husband.
Uh, the only reason I ask is, and I understand you guys pulled it, I was here at Finance, but if there was a possibility that, that would be the case, wouldn't we want to keep a liquor license associated with the property? Or, it doesn't work that way?
We've never done that before, but we have, we have three already.
Okay.
This would be a fourth.
I got it.
There are additional licenses available besides what you're approving tonight, so it's not like this is the last license.
Fair enough.
So, if it were to be taken away, it could be issued to someone else.
Maybe I should explain the procedure, though. You can't just vote not to renew a license. There's a process set out by statute, requires notice, and then a hearing on the non-renewal of a license. And the statute sets out the causes, the bases on which you can decide not to renew a license. That's governed by state statute. So, what we talked about at Finance, and what I recommended, is that I gather, you know, through city staff, more information on the basis that would be used would be that they're not complying with the continuation of business ordinance in Hudson. That's a legitimate basis under the statute. We'd need to gather information on that, and then bring it back. And then we, the city would have a complaint, serve it on them, and schedule a public hearing on it. That's the statutory process for non-renewing.
Okay. So, we have a, if we could get, we have a motion to change, I'd like to put them all in one. Randy, you going to recuse yourself?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Yeah, the liquor license for the change of, specific changes, there's one, two, three, four there. And I guess you could exclude the Hanson Brothers, because we're pulling that one. So, there's the Nova, the Noodles, and Ave Kitchen. Ave Kitchen, excuse me. And then on the backside, we've got our Class A liquor license and, and Class A beer license, Class B beer, and Class C wine, and B beer. So, if there's a motion to approve that, that would be tremendous.
I'm moved to approve all three sections of liquor license with the exception of the Hudson, oh, four, excuse me, sections of liquor license with the exception of the Hanson Brothers.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions, comments? Okay.
Do we need to take specific action on the Hanson Brothers, or?
Yes.
Well, eventually.
Yeah, but it's being pulled from the approval.
Okay. I think we'll send a notice out and have a hearing on it.
Well, I think we'll put it on the, my recommendation is to have it put on the next agenda.
Correct. But we do have to notify them.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, discussion, possible action on description of part-time city engineer establishing a pay rate and hiring the individual for the position. We've approved the job description, including driver's license that needed to be added.
Right, and have to have it valid.
Valid driver's license. Rate of pay was at $65 an hour, and the person is Tom Sifko.
I'm moved to approve the part-time city engineer position.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion?
Did you want to include the, all three items?
Yeah. Do I have to repeat them?
That's right. Is that okay with the second? Whoever second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Discussion, possible action on the position for description for Assistant Zoning Inspector position and authorization for city administrator to proceed with recruitment and hiring. The issue sheet is there. It was approved in our budget. Is there any questions or comments?
Move for approval?
Okay.
I think.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
The, the rate for the pay, it was approved in the budget. Maybe Danny knows it off the top of his head. Oh, really?
Right down to the red cent, or?
No.
$25.90 an hour, 92 cents.
That's pretty close.
That was approved as part of the budget process.
Right. That's correct. And actually, the budget went from April 1st to the end of the year, so we've already saved a month. However, Mr. Gray's been extremely busy at his job, so he's anxious to get this position hired.
We are, too.
I would, probably within six weeks. He should be able to have someone here, four to six weeks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any question?
This is, for my information, this is an increase, an added person?
Yep. Half, half full-time that we approved in last fall in budget time.
There used to be two positions, and then it went back to one.
Yes, if I can regress and explain, we had two, two full-time building inspectors. When Mike Walz, who was a building inspector for near, approximately 30 years for the city, retired, we were just in the beginning of the recession period. So, we decided to monitor the situation. But at the time of retirement, I cautioned the common council at some point in time we would need, if we started going back, I mean, the amount of building we do in Hudson, we cannot do with one building inspector. We do have some contract assistance also. This will also provide some other zoning administration assistance and so forth. So, we're really looking forward to trying to get this position filled and alleviate some of the pressure from Mr. Gray.
Okay. Any discussions or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Discussion, possible action for appropriating public works, equipment capital funds for truck equipment purchase, and these are the signals on top of vehicles, and they're taking it out of their used equipment program, or money that they've had from equipment they've sold. So, there's no budget impact.
I'm moved for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, possible action, we've already done E, it's been approved, so we'll move on to unfinished business, which is the discussion and possible action on ordinance 2-14, Urban Force Ordinance, issue sheet in ordinance 2-14. Who's going to take this? Tom?
I'm just starting.
Or John?
Well, we've added all the appropriate language from the last meeting, and we have a draft wood storage guidelines here, Randy. I know that you had wanted to see that before.
Yeah.
Do you want me to pass that around, or?
You were supposed to email me that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
We kind of forgot, and we're able to put something here today.
And this is what will be in the ordinance?
It's referred to in the ordinance so that if there's, you have questions about wood storing, then you would refer to the guidelines.
But wouldn't you want it in there, so people are...
No, you call, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's guidelines, so they'll just call Tom, and he can...
So, if any other species get added, or other prop procedures, things, we could update the guidelines without, do we still need council approval for that, or no?
No.
Okay.
And it actually could go on the website, so people have...
That's our hope, that we will put it there with our tree planting guidelines, and, yeah.
Anybody have comments, questions? Devin, you, you, we, we changed the definitions on each of the sections?
Right, the items in there are what Catherine said that were changed based on what was recommended at the last meeting.
Right, I, these were the changes the council asked for. You've had first reading, and so...
I'll move to suspend the rules.
No, you've done first reading, so you just, if you're satisfied with it, you can just adopt it.
I'll move to adopt ordinance 2-14.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Something to learn.
Is this, this has been a work in progress for a long time?
I think we started like September, well, we've been working on it for like a year ourselves, and...
Well, it's...
Haven't really never, haven't, having never drafted an ordinance, it's kind of a challenge, actually.
Well, I think, I think it's where, I think we're near where we want it to be.
I think so, it's good. And we are now in the 15-mile buffer zone for Emerald Ashport, east St. Paul, or St. Paul, where's the closest one? Ken?
Actually, on the east end of St. Paul.
So, we're now actually within the zone?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is good timing.
Any questions of Tom, or John, or anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for, Ken, thank you for all your work. Discussion, possible app, action on tree planting permit application.
I just put this on there separately in case something needed to be changed, and it's probably fine.
Need to make a motion to approve it, still. So moved.
Second.
That's what I was told by Deb, so I just...
So, again, the, the purpose of this is so that we, this is in the right-of-way. This isn't, people can plant whatever they want on their own property.
Right. You know, don't put it too close to your house or anything, but, yeah.
So, this is so we can get a variety of trees on the, on the boulevard?
Right, diversity, and, you know, not too close to a hydrant, or a power line, or things like that, so it's just giving everyone good ideas about trees, so...
All right. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on this? We've had a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 11C, discussion and possible action on RFPs for engineering services, issue sheet.
I didn't hear from anybody council-wise that they want any changes, so I'm bringing it back. If we're ready for approval, we can get the process started. Up to you. I'm moved we approve.
I'll second.
The one question that, I mean, I'll fill in the dates based on publication, but what, as far as maintaining the GIS and tree software, is that something that, we need to have that discussion? I think, Danny, that was a point you brought up in your review, wasn't it? About who should be doing that? Should this be their job? The new engineer's job? Should it be staff?
Do we pay for the computer program for that?
Yes.
So, we have our in-house do it?
Not necessarily.
That was the question.
Depends on the level of expertise we have in-house, so...
What?
Depends on the level of expertise we have in-house, so I mean, that discussion will have to take place.
I really think it's something that our, our...
Just leave it up to him.
Okay.